Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I guess at this time, I'd like to ask if those who are being recognized today, the young adults here in the room, if they would be willing to come up to the front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you be willing to do that for us this morning?
(laughing) Her face.
So, yeah, the recipients today, if you want to come up to the front, we'll have you guys lead us.
The flag's over here, guys.
We've got the flag over here.
Flag's right there.
Let's wait for everyone to get up here.
Come on, y'all.
You didn't know you had to work today.
Yeah, we're putting you to work right away. We're going to be facing this way, guys.
Hold on, we've got a couple more coming up.
Want to get started?
Is everybody ready?
Okay.
Get your hand on your heart.
You get it started. Go ahead.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There, good job.
Good job.
I've been in a lot of meetings over the years and that's the best pledge we've ever had.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys did a great job. Our inspirational word for this morning is, "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." And we have our dog this morning.
He's a pee-wee.
Yeah.
Hi, girl Friday. Hi, come on.
Every week, we bring a dog from our Lorraine County Dog Kennel to showcase. This little girl, it's a dapple color, really pretty color. She's really sweet. She will be available on Friday, so if you're interested in getting a dog, come down to our Lorraine County Dog Kennel, pick her up. Costs you $66, which is $50 for the adoption, and 16 for the license. So, we have, what'd you say, 30 dogs?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two dogs available, so if this is not your style of dog, you come down and see what we have available, or you could check us out on our website or Facebook page.
And I think before you leave with the dog, is today the official day for Lorraine County Dog Day?
Today is July 27.
July 27, okay. Great.
10:04 at the kennel, Hattaway Street.
Well, welcome, everyone, this morning. Madam Clerk.
Today, we have the winners of the Solid Waste Calendar Contest.
Okay.
Brandy Schnell.
Yeah, Brandy, if you'll come up and get things started, our Solid Waste Calendar Contest winners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, my name is Brandy Schnell. I'm from the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District, and we had a calendar contest, which we've had for many years now, and it just keeps getting better and better, and bigger and bigger. This year, we had 1,465 entries. Yeah, that was huge, that was huge. Forty different schools participated, forty.
Wow.
That's huge, across Lorraine County. You were allowed to participate if you were in 1st through 12th grade in any Lorraine County school, public or private, so we got a lot of really awesome entries. Commissioner Kokowski and Commissioner Sueda and I were the judges, and you can attest that it was pretty difficult to narrow it down.
Hardest job I've had since I've been here.
(laughing) Over 1,400 entries, it was amazing. So each winner is going to get a gift card and a certificate, and a copy of their artwork, and then, once the calendars are printed, we will get them their calendars to hand out to family and friends. And also, in November, we do a display of the winner's artwork at the Carlisle Visitor Center for America Recycles Day, and then that artwork is available to them afterwards as well. So, we really like to take care of them. So, what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to show a PowerPoint presentation that has, I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing here.
Okay, there we are.
I don't know where it's at. Oh, there it is.
It's magic, Brandy, it's magic.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, we have the, I'm going to do the PowerPoint, and I'm going to show the winning artwork, which is just so good. Okay, so here we go. The cover for this year's, or 2020's calendar is going to be the artwork by Jasmine Morales. She is an 11th grader from the Lorraine County Early College High School at LCC, which I didn't even know was a thing until I looked it up, and-
You need to get closer to the microphone.
So sorry, I thought I was loud enough without the microphone.
It'll come up on there.
Oh, okay. Okay, nobody's ever accused me of not being loud enough. Okay, so this is our cover artwork. Gorgeous. For January, our artist is Allison Calvitz, a 7th grader from Avon Middle School. We got a lot from Avon Middle School this year, actually, a lot of really good artwork. February's artist is Carl Wyble, an 8th grader from Avon Middle School. Peyton Faulkner, March 2020, 3rd grader from St. Joseph's School. Our April's artist is Audrina Fortney, a 5th grader from Lorraine Preparatory Academy. May is going to be Olivia, you know what, I did not get your pronoun, Lee? Olivia Lee, 3rd grader from North Ridgeville Academic Center. June is Emmy Lasko, 1st grader from First Baptist Christian School. July's artist is Abby Winin, 11th grade from Alariah Catholic High School. We love this one.
I know, isn't that so cool? So cute.
Yeah, so creative.
August is Laura Barnes, 11th grader from First Baptist Christian School. September, Skylar West, 4th grader from North Ridgeville Academic Center. October, we thought this was appropriate for October, Jacob Shosher, 8th grader from Avon Middle School. November, Chloe Meng, 8th grader from First Baptist Christian School. December, Riley Brewer, a 2nd grader at Midview North Elementary School. And of course, we want to thank you for your support. So what I would like to do now is have Commissioner Sueda and Commissioner Kokowski come on down. We're going to call you up one at a time to receive your certificate, and then we're going to have you go stand over there by Dawn, wave Dawn. And Dawn is going to give you your gift card, and I'm going to have you stand over there until it's completely done, because then we will have you all come back in front, and we'll have Commissioner Lundie come down and have a picture with everyone, okay? So, there are a couple students who weren't able to make it today, but we'll still call their names. Okay, so the first student that we would like to call up is Jasmine Morales. And fun fact, Jasmine brought cookies for you. I asked her who specifically they were for, and she said, "The adults in charge," so-
The adults in charge.
Where are they?
Yeah, calling all the adults in charge. Yeah, right. Oh, yeah, absolutely, come on front, take a picture. That is the cover artist. We're going to go in order, so that was the cover artist, and here in January is Allison Calvitz, but I already know that she's not here today. But, yes, Allison. Okay, February's artist is Carl Wyble. Come on up, buddy. I feel like Vanna White. Come on.
No, like, come on down.
Aw, okay, Price is Right. Either way.
Hi, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your month. Hold this up, so they get your name.
Yeah, I can't. Come in.
So we know, that's right.
Oh, that gift card, right? For May, we have Olivia Lee. Not 100% sure if she's here today, so it looks like not. Okay, Laura Barnes.
That's another North Ridgeville.
And, just so we all are clear, we don't ever look at any names, or schools, or cities when we're judging them, we know nothing. Next, we have Jacob Shosher, and I am not 100% sure that he is here either. I didn't hear from him, so, okay, Chloe Meng. Thank you to all the parents. Thank you, and, thank you. Yes, I'll make sure you all get your cookies. And just so that we don't disrupt the meeting, I know that I have several parents that need to get back to work, so I'd like to give them a minute to those that would like to leave. So, any of my winners and parents that would like to go now is the time. All right, thank you all for attending.
Thank you. The future is very bright.
Yes, it is.
Great.
Here, I thought you were a winner, Dick.
Yeah, right. I always have flashbacks to 7th grade, I had a art teacher by name of Sister Bernadette, and Sister made very clear to me, she leaned over my shoulder and said, "Mr. Lundie, you just do not have any artistic ability."
Aww.
And I never forgot Sister Bernadette, all those years later, so I struggled-
That's an inspiration.
Yeah, I struggled to draw, stroke, stick people, I guess, so-
At least it was artistic ability.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Instead of mental ability.
Any ability at all.
Yeah, like, nothing, right?
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Well, we will resume. Madam Clerk will probably handle the resolutions.
Okay. Investments?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
There are no advances for today. Requisitions?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Bills?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Board of Commissioners.
That would be our county administrator, Mr. Jim Cordez. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner. I do have a number of personnel issues I wish to discuss with the boards this morning. I want to go over some applications at Job and Family Services, Collection Center, 911, I think there may be a few more stuck in the back if we have time. I also have completed labor contract with United Steelworkers America and the county engineers. I'm pushing a little bit of timeframes on that, because I've had it for a little bit, it's been sitting on my desk, so I need to go over that, which I also want to give you an update on, where we are with the Auditors' Office and the labor contract there.
And a status update on where we'll begin negotiations a little bit later this summer
with a few of our other unions, if we have time. Now, I also need to talk about two pending legal matters, and three real estate matters that we have, that we're in negotiations on. All of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask that at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session, we discuss those matters that I've explained. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine, approve and waive reading of the county Commissioners' meeting minutes for June 19 and 25 of 2019.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Number 10, approve change order number two in amount of $2,550.93 to Crown Commercial Construction Incorporated in Medina for additional work at 201 Burns Road Annex to include outlets, lights, door, and extinguishers.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Under number 11, establishing one board for alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health in Lorraine County, Ohio pursuant to revised code, Chapter 340, effective July 1 of 2019.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yes, at this point, I would like to read into the public record our resolution. On this day of celebration, to better serve those battling addiction and mental illness, I'll read the following historic resolution for our county. In the matter of establishing one board for alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health in Lorraine County, Ohio pursuant to revised code, Chapter 340, effective July 1, 2019. And please be patient with me, folks, it's a little lengthy. Whereas there is operating in Lorraine County two separate boards, the Lorraine County Board of Mental Health and the Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board. And whereas, Lorraine County is the only remaining county in the state of Ohio that operates two such separate boards. And whereas, due to the increasing recognition in the medical world that mental health and addiction are invariably and extricably intertwined, and due to the extent of the opioid crisis in Lorraine County, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners deems it critical to the implementation of more expansive, effective, and coordinated services that the two boards be merged into one entity. And whereas, Chapter 340 of the revised code empowers the Board of Commissioners to establish one board for a single alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health service district. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to establish a unified system of treatment for mentally ill persons and persons with addiction. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to establish a community support system available for every alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health service in Lorraine County. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to protect the personal liberty of mentally ill persons so that they may be treated in the least restrictive environment. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to encourage the development of high-quality, cost-effective, and comprehensive services, including culturally sensitive services. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to foster the development of comprehensive community mental health services based on recognized local needs, especially for severely mentally disabled children, adolescents, and adults. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to ensure that services provided meet minimum standards established by the State Director of Mental Health and Addiction Services. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to promote the delivery of high-quality and cost-effective addiction and mental health services. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to promote the participation of persons receiving mental health services and addiction services in the planning, delivery, and evaluation of these services. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to have the composition of the unified board reflect as nearly as possible the composition of the population of Lorraine County as to race and sex. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners endeavors to appoint a unified board that will best serve the citizens of Lorraine County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County, Ohio pursuant to Chapter 340 of the revised code, the Lorraine County Board of Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services is hereby established to provide services for alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health for the Lorraine County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Service District. The Adam Board shall hereafter exercise the powers set forth in Chapter 340 of the revised code applicable to an alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health service board. The establishment of the Adam Board and the appointment of members of the Adam Board, as decreed by this resolution, shall be effective July 1, 2019, at 12:00 a.m. The Lorraine County Mental Health Board and the Lorraine County Alcohol, Drug, and Addiction Services Board shall cease to exist after June 30, 2019. Pursuant to Chapter 340 of the revised code, the Board of Commissioners hereby appoints the following persons as members of the Adam Board, with the term of office as hereafter set forth. Reagan Phillips, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2023. Karen McElwain, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2021. Sandra Primura, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. James Shaper, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. Craig Brushnahan, term July 1, 2019 to 2030, 2023. Dan Urban, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2021. Dan Carrero, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. Hope Moon, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2021. Inez James, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2023. Ted Kallo, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2023. Pursuant to Chapter 340 of the revised code, the State Director of Mental Health and Addiction Services has appointed the following persons as members of the Adam Board. David DeTilio, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2021. Karen Sutera, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. Tim Carion, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2023. Denise Ecott, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. David Ashenhurst, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2021. Kara Copeland, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2021. Pamela Waite, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2023. And Arthur Clearly, term July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. I'll call to the clerk's attention that there are a typo here, should be 2023 for Pamela Waite, not 3023? I don't know if any of us will be around in 3023, but God bless Pam if she is. Pursuant to Chapter 340 of the revised code, in effect of July 1, 2019, at 12:00 a.m., the Adam Board shall exercise the rights, privileges, immunities, powers, and duties that had been possessed by the Lorraine County Mental Health Board and the Lorraine County Alcohol, Drug Addiction Services Board prior to that date. Effective July 1, 2019, at 12:00 a.m., all property and obligations of the Lorraine County Mental Health Board and Lorraine County Alcohol, Drug, and Addiction Services Board are hereby transferred to the Adam Board. In order to ensure a seamless transition from the Lorraine County Mental Health Board and the Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board to the new Adam Board, all those who are employed by the Lorraine County Mental Health Board and the Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Addiction Service Board as of June 30, 2019, shall remain employed by the new Adam Board until the Adam Board otherwise directs. The Board of Commissioners requests that the new Adam Board meet forthwith on July 1, 2019, to immediately take the steps necessary to ensure a seamless transition from the previous boards and to ensure the provisions of services of the new Adam Board consistent with this resolution and Chapter 340 of the revised code. Any comments at this time?
I didn't know we were done.
Was that too short for you?
Well, no, I thought you were looking-
Did she ask for discussion first?
We're in discussion.
We're in discussion.
Yes.
Well, first, I want to thank all the members that served on both the mental health and addiction boards up until this point. These people voluntarily participate and give of their time and talent to which they should all be commended. Anyone who sits on a board knows what a commitment that is. This merger should have been done years ago. We found out after we announced that the addiction side of things were losing about $1 million a year because the boards were not merged. We are the last county in Ohio to have two separate boards. All other of the 87 counties knew what mental health and addiction go hand in hand, which makes sense combining the boards and that it is necessary. The two existing boards never wanted to- The two existing boards never wanted to unite on their own, so we made the decision for them, and unfortunately, this brought about somewhat of a battle rather than a smooth process. I was surprised to hear that the Mental Health Board decided to bring the ex-director Charlie Neff back into the fold to fill Kathleen Kern's, who quit on June 30, when the new board is effective July 1. First of all, Mr. Neff was in charge for over a decade and did not work to combine the boards while he was there, so I'm not sure why they believe he is the person to guide the process. It's disrespectful to the new board that the Mental Health Board is trying to decide who will be the interim director before the board even has their first meeting. I would be upset about that if I were the new board, and I would also not be happy about if I was the current director of the Addus Board. The two boards sent us their 10 recommendations, five from each board, and we interviewed all of them. They were very passionate about their roles on the board and were very dedicated to our community. Three of the 10 they sent us were state appointments, which would have taken local control away from the new board and given the state 11 seats and the local appointment seven seats. Two of the 10, they were unable to serve, one had a conflict of interest with her job, and the other one had a time commitment issue and declined serving. Out of the 10 recommendations they sent us, there was only one board member we thought would not make the transition a smooth one. That member actually tried to involve the Supreme Court stating we had a dispute over appointments when we hadn't even made them yet. We also wanted the demographics to represent the community and those they serve, so we looked for additional board members that would bring diversity to the table. I'm very happy with the makeup of the new board, and I believe they will do great work going forward. I'm happy that our job is done, and we can't wait to see what the future brings as the new board paves the way for taking care of those in our community who suffer with mental health and addiction.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Kokowski and Commissioner Lundey. This has been a very interesting process, but also a very humbling experience because all of the people we've interviewed have a great story to tell as well as a real deep heart for service in this arena. So I'm just delighted that, first of all, we're going to be moving the county forward with the services that we owe to our community and our citizens. The mental health and addiction rates are staggering, and by unifying those two boards, we have the opportunity to deliver services on a greater platform with greater funding and greater ability. I do regret that we had to slim down the number of appointees we had, but all the while in that process, we knew that we had to make up a compensation board that reflected our community, that had the skill and the talent and the heart and the time that it was going to require to move and create this new board, to work on behalf of the citizens, and to reflect our community not just in diversity and not just in shared experiences, but also what part of the community they touch, so that we can reach all ends of our county with the service in a way that most effectively will transition the outcome into impressive statistics moving forward. With that said, I'd also like to thank all the previous board members. It is a tough job to have to give up that kind of time, and it's all volunteer. I also want to thank Elaine and Kathleen, who supported this endeavor from the beginning. They encouraged us to make the merge, they agreed that we needed to do the merge. We had emails from the general population. I've had phone calls, just this morning, I was at the Neighborhood Alliance breakfast, where people are celebrating the fact that we are finally taking this initiative. So with that said, I'm excited to see what we're going to be able to deliver moving forward. I thank the outgoing members, I welcome the new members, and I just want to express my gratitude. Thank you.
I would just like to add this morning that this is a day of celebration. It's a day of celebration because we are going to be able to better serve those who are battling mental illness and addiction in our community by bringing these resources together. I know that back in March, I had made the motion for us to start this merger process and to set a deadline for that merger process, and this board strongly supports this initiative. At that time in March, I know that the directors of both of the boards stated first, Elaine Georges to the Chronicle Telegram on March 13, stated with the consolidation that's moving ahead, we can take the best of the best from both boards, it'll be a really good benefit for our community, not only for the individuals we serve, but their families, and ultimately, our communities, and that's really what this is all about. Couldn't agree more, Elaine. And Dr. Kern stated, "We are stronger together with the power of our combined expertise." So joining forces makes a great deal of sense in terms of the services we can deliver together and the impact that they can bring to the community. This is something that I remember when I first got elected, having early conversations with Elaine and with Dr. Kern about trying to scratch my head and figure out why we had two separate boards and we weren't on the same page. You know, we still have 60 people a month who are overdosing in this county. The overdose deaths obviously are down because of so much Narcan is available out there, but the overdoses continue at a very alarming rate. Suicides continue to take place at a very alarming rate. When people are battling addiction, they kind of give up hope, leading them down that road sometimes of suicide. And for those who are depressed, sometimes they turn to other ways of medicating, self-medicating, to try to get through and battle with their depression. The experts nowadays say that addiction is a brain disorder, and I guess I've never been able to figure out why we weren't able to connect our resources, but we are, again, the last county to do this, and today it is done. I can't stress enough how seriously the board took their responsibility of making these appointments. We interviewed all the candidates that were brought forward to us, we made good times available to them, spent a half hour, I believe, with each candidate. Each candidate was asked the same questions. We told them to be very candid with them, we would be very candid with us, we would be candid with them, and had some very good conversations, good people, as my colleague Lori pointed out. You know, nobody gets paid to sit on these boards. When you sit on these state boards, you get some pretty good compensation, but this truly shows when you sit on these community boards that you're deeply passionate and committed. I can't say enough about how these individuals are very passionate about mental health, very passionate about addiction, and that was something we weighed heavily. We wanted to make sure that individuals saw both ends of the continuum, not just strongly in one camp or the other. And obviously, we wanted to make sure that those individuals who were interested in being on this board supported a merger and wanted to be part of a merged board and weren't going to be people who wanted to be in silos after there was a merged board, and that's not productive for the community. So those were things that weighed heavily. But for the individuals that we've appointed, I can only stress to you that these individuals know firsthand the impact that mental illness and addiction can have on loved ones. People that we've appointed have had immediate family members impacted, daughters, sons, husbands, wives.
Employees.
Yeah, employees. Also, we've...
From the courtroom.
Right. And then also, some of these individuals are still in recovery, and that's, once you're in recovery, that's a daily battle. It's a daily battle, a lifelong battle, and so they understand very well. For anyone to ever claim that any of these individuals are political appointments is very disparaging to them. They serve the community well, they understand the issues of addiction and mental health extremely well because they have personally experienced it. And I don't know about you, but you know, there's barely a week that goes by where we don't find out about somebody at our church, somebody in our community, somebody in our neighborhood, somebody in our own family that has, you know, died as a result of addiction or mental illness and taking their own life. So we need to stop this, and this is a celebration. It's a new day in Lorraine County to better provide services for those battling mental illness and addiction. Jim?
We need to just establish the date. You establish the date of the board, you need to establish the date and time for the first meeting.
Sure.
I didn't see, I didn't hear it in the resolution, unless I missed it.
Okay.
I did not either.
Okay, so...
You're correct.
The, I didn't want to interrupt such a, you know, passionate monologue by all three commissioners, but I don't want you to vote without, otherwise, the code is a little, the code's pretty clear, and I think they did a good job when they cleaned it up after 2013 to make it a simple, very simple process. You know, one line saying "all responsibilities and obligation" really made the process clean, but it didn't say anything about how to establish the first meeting, so it's become clear that we should establish the first date and time of the meeting so that the board convenes, and at that meeting, they'll have to at least elect by a simple majority an acting chair to conduct the business of the meeting as they move forward into establishing themselves with some officers. So as we discussed various times, I've booked this room and the front room for their executive session because they're a large group at 6 o'clock. I believe it's 6, or 6:30?
Yeah, and the last paragraph of the resolution, I'll state it again, the Board of Commissioners requests that the new Adam Board meet forthwith on July 1, 2019. Now, we did not state a time, 6:00 p.m.
Here?
Here, in the boardroom.
Refreshments at 5:30.
There will be refreshments at 5:30.
So I will have this room set up for that board, and I'll have the front A conference room set up for their executive session. So this way, we have it in the resolution and it's in the notice, and that'll serve as public notice.
And this is their initial and organizational meeting, so I want to be clear. So this meeting notice that we are posting, meeting notice, Monday, July 1, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Room B, Aliria, Ohio, 44035. The Alcohol, Drug, Addiction, and Mental Health Board, Adam of Lorraine County, will have their initial and organizational meeting. Any other comments at this time?
No, just very happy to see this occurring.
Madam Clerk?
It's no further discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Okay. Number 12, pursuant to Section 5722.21 of the Ohio Revised Code, it hereby waives the current delinquent taxes owed to the Aliria Library, and it should state there that it's five parcels of property.
So move.
Second?
Yeah, I know, I thought maybe you should come on.
Yeah, that should not read "Aliria Library," we're being the county.
That's an old, that's not the library. I saw that too, in fact, we got caught up in the last two days and some stuff, but that needs to come out of there.
Mr. Fitzgerald, did you want to come up and discuss this matter at all?
The taxes owed on this are to the county, so let me explain since we got it there in the resolution. The property is held in a passive land bank by the City of Aliria. The county has an active land bank that can remove delinquent taxes upon receipt of properties that have back taxes due. That's an active land bank. The cities, municipalities, et cetera, can hold property in a passive land bank, but the taxes do not get removed from the property. Should the property be sold, those taxes have to be paid back to the originating entities that taxed, delineated the property to begin with. There is a provision in the Ohio Revised Code that allows the removal of taxes by the taxing entities if they so agree if the property is used for a purpose such as economic development or redevelopment. This property is going to be redeveloped in partnership with the City of Aliria. They have a developer, and they've cobbled together some nonproductive parcels. Some of these parcels are in that, those parcels, there's about four or five taxing entities in the group. Aliria Library was one of them, so they were mentioned in the letter, and also, the county is one of those taxing entities. My understanding is the other authorities have agreed to remove their taxes from the parcels, and Lorraine County would be the last one to remove them to be a partner in this redevelopment of this property. And I know Mr. Fitzgerald's here, if you have any other additional questions.
Do you wish to add anything to that? And you have to come up front.
Come on up and get your five minutes of fame.
Five minutes of fame in Lorraine County.
I don't know, we need more than another five minutes of fame.
Three minutes of fame, however many minutes you want.
You're a surprise guest, we didn't expect you here today.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
I came here with my artwork for the calendar.
Sorry you didn't win.
Everything Mr. Cortez said is correct. This is an unusual circumstance. These properties have been basically vacant land for years and years and years. They have a number of challenges to develop them, they actually have a utility easement that makes it very difficult to develop. There's also a waterway there that is going to have to be remediated at the city's cost at some point. There is an end user that we've been in discussions with that's interested in actually making a substantial investment. There's also an adjacent property owner that would like to use part of the property where there's currently about 35 people employed with a payroll of about 1.6 million. And by the forgiveness of these taxes, we're going to be able to divide some of that land and then provide parking so that those jobs can be maintained. The city's very appreciative for the county taking this action. This is an unusual situation, I don't think the city has ever asked for anything like this before. It's specifically designed in the Ohio Revised Code for this type of extraordinary circumstance when there's something like an economic development project, as Mr. Cortez mentioned. There's five entities actually that are entitled to a portion of those taxes. There's Lorraine County Commissioners, obviously, but in addition to yourselves, there are the Aliria Public Schools, the library system, LCJVS, and the city itself. So all five of those legislative bodies under the Ohio Revised Code section have to do their own due diligence and then make a decision to pass a resolution authorizing that. All of those bodies, we've spoken to all of them, communicated with all of their legal counsel and the boards themselves, and all of them have passed it. The Board of Commissioners is the last one. I would note one other thing that we've agreed to, this was at the suggestion actually of the school board originally, but it will apply to all of the taxing entities. If there is eventually a sale to a developer, and after the city's costs to remediate the easements that I mentioned have been, after those costs have been absorbed, each taxing entity will then get the pro rata share that they would have been entitled to anyway. I also want to just make the point that the county, in a way, is forgiving taxes, but these taxes have never been collected in years and years and years. There's no party to go after for these taxes. It's currently held, the title is held by the city, and the city isn't paying those taxes. The city obviously doesn't pay property taxes, so the city isn't giving up any current value of anything, but legally, it's on the books. Now, in the future, our hope is, as this is developed economically, now it will start paying taxes to the schools, to the library, and to the city, and to the county as well.
And if that project doesn't move forward, then what happens?
Well, there's actually several properties that are a few, well, there's one property in particular, that's the old East 49th Street Bridge property, when that bridge was taken down, and that's a property that we've talked about packaging up and then trying to market it through an RFP or RFQ process to the development community. And there may be a few other scattered parcels elsewhere in the city that I've discussed with the mayor that have been kind of languishing, and there might be an opportunity then to market them as a package to industrial users. As I'm sure your economic development folks have told you, there's a real need for warehouse and industrial space in that Aliria corridor there because of the transportation networks there, so there's a real demand for it. So we're hopeful, even if this current negotiation, which we haven't been able to complete because of the tax issue, even if that for some reason were to fall through, that we think that there's a real market for it. I would just mention one other thing, and that is, I spoke yesterday to the adjacent property owners, they've been waiting very patiently about this. There's about 35 jobs there with over $1 million in payroll. Those jobs are at risk to, or the county is at risk to losing those jobs. That development, at least for parking, which may not sound like a great use, but it makes that business more viable, and it's an improvement over what you have now, which is an empty field. That is, I mean, they're going to begin that process as soon as possible.
Is that parking going on these parcels?
I'm sorry?
That parking's going on these parcels?
On just a portion of one of the...
Because I got to be honest with you, we were told that this was a done deal, not that they were in negotiations if we completed these parcels. So the information we received is that this was the last piece and that this completed it, not that they were still in negotiations. See, and this is my frustration with the City of Aliria. We told them that if they, that we would give them a letter saying that we would do this if that was to finish the negotiations, so, and... if that was to finish the negotiations, so, and they said it was done. All we need to do is the official action.
Jim, let me, let me be clear. I don't mean to interrupt, but.
That's okay.
The only thing that, it hasn't been signed. There hasn't, there are no outstanding terms between the end users. But there hasn't been, there hasn't been, there hasn't been a signed contract because we haven't been able to complete it because of the tax issue.
You can complete a contract by saying that, if, if I was to give you, pass a resolution saying, we agree to do this if you get a signed contract, you can complete the, the contract on this. This is my frustration with the City of Aliria and it continues to be a frustration with the City of Aliria because you, you, Ed, you said in your conversation that if this negotiation breaks down, we're going to package it this way. That, that's not what we're agreeing to. We're agreeing to, to, to vacate the taxes on this property for this project. And if, and I can tell you that if this project doesn't go forward, then we want these properties clawed back. The, the, we're not vacating the taxes on these properties for some future project that we don't know about. And, and this is what I've communicated to Aliria repeatedly. And they, and I don't understand why we're, we're back having the same conversation that we've had, not with you, sir, not with you.
I, I, I understand. I, I would just, the, the only, I would take issue when you say clawing the taxes back because no one is paying these taxes. None of these taxes have been collected.
But I understand that.
And there is no, there is no prospect of them ever being paid. No one has made a penny off of this property.
I, I understand that too, sir.
As soon as the board is able to pass this resolution, we have deals that we have, are, we have deals with two end users, actually. So we have an end user with a company called Servpro for the, for the lion's share and then we have a very small portion of one of the parcels that would be used for the adjacent property owner and they're very anxious to sign the final agreement.
Let me ask you it this way. You cannot market these properties with an agreement by the board that should you have a firm commitment to development that they will remove the taxes. That's not good enough?
Well, it's, it's my experience in economic development, which goes back a few years and I represent not just a few public entities, but a lot of private entities, is that they're, they're very hesitant to sign a contract that is contingent.
You know, in my experience?
I'm telling you, you asked me, my, my, my answer to you is that it's very difficult to market those things and say that it's contingent on a board later passing something. The question I think for the commissioners has to be is, what are you giving? Are you giving anything up? Is there some risk? And the reason that I think that this is worth it is, number one, we have thirty jobs with over, over a billion dollars in payroll that are waiting for this and that we may lose if we delay. Every other government entity has.
No, Ed, you don't have thirty jobs. You don't have a completed agreement. You said that there. You said that.
Mr. Cortez, you're, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying.
Okay.
There is a, there is an adjacent property owner. The property owner's name is Kevin Kelly. He, 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 his tenants are two companies that are called Excel and Life Share.
Okay.
There's thirty jobs there right now. They're looking at alternative sites, including outside of Lorraine County. We cannot sign a completed deal with him while the taxes are still on the property.
So which parcel does Kevin Kelly need?
The property, if you look at, if you look at the map, it's the, it's the parcel that is immediately to the east.
Okay.
So it's at the corner there.
Okay.
So those thirty jobs, I can tell you, are, they have already started looking at locations outside of, of Lorraine County. Again, the board has, and I've, I've sat there figuratively in their shoes before, they have to weigh the pluses and minuses with it. The status quo is that nobody is getting any tax revenue from this whatsoever.
The parcels that Kevin Kelly needs, and Kevin Kelly has called me, okay, I've gotten a message from him, but I was waiting on this process here. Those parcels can be, can be, the taxes can be taken off of them. And it could have been taken off a much easier way. The City of Aliria could have, could have asked, we could have transferred these parcels to the county land bank. We could have exhausted the taxes in a much easier fashion and we could have sold the property to Mr. Kelly for one dollar. So there is other processes too. You, you would readily admit that too, would you not, sir?
If the original request that came in from, that I authored, that, or helped draft, the mayor, that the mayor sent to the board was in November. There's, I, I don't want to get, look, we all know there have been some communication issues and you just, you just referenced them. And we're not going to solve them here today. I would just say that there have been a lot of times where the city and the county have worked cooperatively with the land bank for the elimination of taxes. This is an unusual situation. It's devised by, was devised by the legislature for just this kind of situation. There are five entities that were, are entitled to a portion of the taxes. All of them have gone through due diligence process. They didn't do it glibly or without any review of this. The school board in particular that was entitled to roughly three times the amount of taxes that the county would be entitled to, took this very seriously and they believed that under these circumstances that it was warranted. And I hope that this board makes the same, same conclusion. It's the, it's the best chance that we have to bring these parcels back to economic use. And if we delay any further, I'm afraid that there's a chance that we won't be able to do that. And they'll continue, you'll continue to get the status quo, which is empty lots and jobs that are going to be moving out of the community and no taxes being paid to either our schools, our libraries, or the county. Could it be done better? Look, I'm always happy to talk. I would just say, in fairness, that when we laid all these things out in November, there wasn't a response there. I would just say, moving forward in the future, and as long as I'm at the city, and I'm sure other folks at the city would say the same thing, that there should be a discussion immediately. And so we can learn from that experience.
For clarity, could I just ask a question? So the initial purpose is to create the new development opportunity that you haven't inked yet, but you've got it available. It's subject to the removal of all of these, the waivers. How does that, is parking a lot a Plan B or is it part and parcel of the first one?
No, so there's two folks that we've been in, in serious discussions with and more, I shouldn't say discussions. There are two tentative transactions. One is with an end user who's talked about making over a million dollars investment in terms of a new facility on the land and also industrial equipment that he would be bringing in there.
And that's the Servpro client?
That's Servpro.
Got it.
A gentleman named Dan, Dan Russell. And if I thought it was going to be an issue, I'd be happy to bring Mr. Russell. I could, I could have brought.
I'm just trying because.
So, Miss, but there's, it's about six point, it's about six point two acres if you look at the entire.
Correct.
If you look at the entire area. Mr. Kelly only needs a small sliver. We, we are still working with our engineering department about what exactly the parameters of that are going to be. So it's going to be off of just one of the parcels. It's actually the southernmost parcel. If you look at the aerial map and it would be a rectangular portion that could be anywhere from point two acres to point six acres and we're just working with our parking folks about how that would happen. So with the first end user that I mentioned, Servpro, the estimate is about forty jobs with an average wage of about fifty thousand dollars actually per job. That doesn't account, that doesn't include, again, the investment in the facility and the equipment. With Mr. Kelly and his tenants there, he has about thirty employees, a little bit lower wage, but still over a million dollars in, in, in payroll. And that, and that, he's very anxious to pull construction permits as soon as possible.
And he will provide the survey to split that and the split?
Actually, this, the, the city is going to, the city has already contracted tentatively to do a, a survey as well. I mean, there's more involved in this. This, one of the reasons that this lot is so difficult to develop and the reason that it's remained vacant so long is there's so many issues for it. So for instance, the county, the city is going to end up spending additional funds. We're not getting any kind of windfall on here. We have to pay for a phase one environmental study, which was, which we were performing last week. We're going to do the survey. We have to remediate a waterway issue there where we're going to have to probably pipe a water issue out of there. So it is not an appealing lot for a developer to say, hey, I think I'll take a chance on this. And then if you add on to it the fact that there's two hundred thousand dollars in taxes that are pending, it scares off a lot of investment, which is why it hasn't happened before.
The, the, is it the intention of the City of Servpro goes there? You mentioned that returning the property to a productive tax environment. Is there, is it the intention of the city to, once the job, once it's complete and remediated and, and to offer tax incremental financing and/or tax abatement on the property?
No, excellent question. And that was an issue that in their due diligence process that the school board brought up. They wanted to make an assurance that if they were going to waive the taxes on this, that there wasn't going to be any other kind of further tax consideration and we agreed to that. And if it's not in your version of the resolution, we have no problem with that being included in your version of the resolution that we're making, that we'll make an, an official, as official contingent, contingency on this, that there will, will not be any tax abatement on this property or any, or, or any TIF district or anything affecting the collection of the property taxes.
I mean, I think that's a fair, fair resolution. And it's, my frustration with you, it's with my communication with the city and what they tell us and because I think the communication to the board was a little bit different.
That it was already a deal, done deal.
What you said here, so I, I want you to know, my objection isn't with you, sir. But we hear a little bit different sometimes and it frustrates the commissioners. I, I see the look right now going down the road. But, but I, you know, Commissioner, I think that, that's fair with regard to not applying additional tax consideration to the property and returning it to productive use and that use is returned even with a different, different developer on the property. Because we know how much remediation costs on property. Phase ones aren't, aren't that expensive, but if you have to go to a phase two.
And then the water issue also, we know how expensive that could be.
Right, but, you know, I just hope that the communication piece, when we're told that something's complete, that it is complete in the future rather than what we received.
And we do, we do have a, and Commissioner Kokowski, we do, we do have an estimate from our, from our engineering department on the, on the, on the water issue, but until you get into the ground, sometimes those things can change. I don't want to speak beyond my authority here, but one thing that I do think would be helpful, take it for what it's worth, is that because these economic, economic development issues are so important and because there are a number of pending projects that are brewing right now in the City of Aliria, which is good news, but all of them are going to impact the county somehow and all of them are going to be things that you're going to want to either be an active or passive participant in. And there really should be, if there's not already, and to my knowledge that there is not, there should be a, a standing meeting between staff people and exchange information and say, listen, on a quarterly basis, let's sit down and talk about it. And I'm just saying, I'm right, I'm right over here, I'm only a few feet away and I'll pay for lunch or anything you like.
Oh, no, no, you don't, I'll pay for lunch. You do know where.
Okay, then we have a deal. But I would suggest that that happen because I do think that this is, I don't think this is a controversial action, but I think it, it was aggravated by some communication issues that we can fix.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
That was a little bit more than three minutes, wasn't it?
Well, if.
Well, I like the idea that if it does get sold in the future, that the respective taxing authority agencies that would normally receive those taxes will actually get a portion of those taxes.
Let me point out, our, our tax off this property is not very significant, okay? Nor would it be in the future. Because the county gets very little of the property. I think it's like twelve percent.
Dollar sixty-four?
Is it twelve percent something?
Hundred dollars?
Right, so, but, but, but again, I, I like what, what Mr. Fitzgerald said about the communication. You, you understand the frustration, the communication with the city. It's, it's always been prevalent. We've talked about it before. We, we received a different communication. That is not this gentleman's fault.
No.
But, but the property does need to be repurposed.
So I would like to make an amendment to this.
Add the other three parcels that's not on the resolution?
Well, first off, we need to make sure that it's five and not three. But the amendment, I guess I would like to make in legal counsel, if you have any recommendations here, is that, you know, we hereby waive the, the current delinquent taxes owed with the understanding that there will not be additional tax abatement or TIF connected to these properties.
That would be, you know, at, at any kind of tax abatement.
To these parcels, rather.
Right, for those five parcels.
Is that sufficient, Jerry, or, or not?
Okay, I'll second that as amended.
Okay, is there any further?
We need to vote on the amendment first and then.
On the amendment, okay.
Right, Jerry? First on the amendment, then the.
Right, right.
So.
On the amendment.
Amend, we're going to amend pursuant to section five seven two two point two one of the Ohio Revised Code, hereby waiving the current delinquent taxes. And I'm sorry, I didn't get the rest of it.
We will not authorize any tax abatement or tax incremental finance.
We don't authorize.
No, we don't.
They will not, the, the property will not receive any additional, will not receive any future tax abatement of, of, of future property taxes.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, that's, that is my motion.
I'll second.
So we're just voting on the amendment first and then?
Right.
The amendment first, Janice.
Okay, so, do I need to read it again?
No, you're, you're.
Take the roll.
Okay, no further discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
And now on the resolution.
Okay, so, now I.
She already read it, so go ahead and just make the motion.
Okay, okay. Call them, I move item number twelve here.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Okay. Number thirteen, under the airport award contract to Jess Howard Electric Company, black look in the amount of five hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and twenty cents. Three bids were received on May twenty-eighth, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Ninety-five percent state shared reimbursed through ODOT aviation grant and five percent local share to be paid from account number seven three zero zero. Issue notice to proceed and complete within one hundred eighty days. Authorize administrator to notify auditor to release retainage at completion of project.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Well, 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 you can't say any discussion, then call the roll.
I moved a little too fast.
That's good, Janice. I appreciate, you're getting really good at this, even though you only do it about once or twice a year. The, the commissioners, I do think we need to talk about this. Every time we have an airport issue, we need to talk about it. I don't want, I don't want to, you know, look up one day and somebody just said, we just spent how much money on the airport? And why are we spending that much money on the airport? And why are we wasting money on the airport? They're free to think it's a, a waste of money on the airport, but this is FAA money that's, that, that it's given to us to maintain the airport. We're required to maintain the airport. They come out, they, they check the condition of the lighting, the, the runways, the taxiways. They grade this. They have a grading system. And once they grade that, they decide what work needs to be done and they provide grant money to do the work. We are required to match that grant money. Usually it's about five percent. This is five percent matching money. We end up getting some ODOT money to make a part of it. It's usually ninety-ten money, but with, with ODOT money, we bring it down to ninety-five-five. You don't have to take this money, by the way. If you don't take it, then, you know, nineteen years and eleven months from now, you can sell the airport, but you still have to do the work. That, that doesn't alleviate your burden of having to do this work. And if you don't do the work, they'll just sue you and make you do the work anyway. Out of your own money. But if you do take this money, you're committed for another twenty years. And actually, I stated that wrong because the last FAA money we got was about a year ago, so you only have nineteen years left if you don't take this money.
That's a game changer.
Until you own the airport yourself. The, I tell you this every time we, we, we sit here and we take FAA money and we talk about the airport so that someday we've communicated this effectively into the community. It's, it's a really a, a wick situation. You can't live without it, you can't live with it.
That you tried to go down and actually ask them to close the airport and they said no?
Well, we went there. We, the, we drove to Chicago and, and we, we met with, they flew people in from all over the place and.
That was a while back, though. I think we should stay.
We, we could go again.
No, I'm just guessing. Just, just so people don't think you had the meeting here in the past.
No, but I, I haven't had a deep dip, deep dish pizza in a while. I'd be more than happy to go to Chicago again and, 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 you know, visit with them and, and get my face squashed into the carpet and come back with the same answer I got several years back. We're reliever airport for, for Cleveland Hopkins. Now, people are going to say, well, what are you relieving? Because we don't have a very big runway and we're not going to be putting the seven thirty-seven Max. So nobody's putting the seven thirty-seven Max anywhere right now, but the, the, what we relieve is small, small commercial and, and private traffic off the big runway so that they can, they can land the big jets in a time, a time of emergency and weather conditions and so forth. So with that designation, we have to not take FAA money for twenty years. After twenty years, the airport belongs solely to the local community and they can dispose of it or do what they want with it. So you have, you took money last year, so you got nineteen years if you don't take this money to wait, but you still have to do this work. What's your choice? What's your choice?
Take the money. That was ahead of the vote.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm just, I know I'm being a little sarcastic, but I hope people see the, the situation we're in. It really is, it really is a difficult situation.
As I say all the time, I don't mean this in a derogatory way to the government, but when you take the money, it's like being married to the mob, you're in the family, so there's no place to go.
Yeah, it's tough, it's tough. I understand.
Yeah, okay.
But, but recognizing that there's very little local money in this.
Fifty thousand is what we allocate to the airport every year.
Well, from the general fund, and then the airport generates a considerable amount of revenue to match the rest.
Correct.
With the number one revenue source, commissioners?
Growing crops.
Growing corn, growing corn. So I would ask that, that you approve this, I know you're reluctant, you always do approve it, but, but that we, the taxpayers understand that there's a frustration with us with the airport, but it's not going to end anytime in the, in the very near future.
You want to call for the roll now? Any further discussion?
Okay, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, number 14, children and families council. Approve and enter into contracts for the purchase and delivery of services for the Ohio family and children, first family-centered services, and support the fiscal year 20, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Catholic charities would be $25,000, and the Child Care Resource Center would be $18,000.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Number 15, approve and enter into contracts for the purchase and delivery of services for the Help Me Grow Early Intervention Program of Lorain County for fiscal year 20, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Under Mercy, it would be $2,000. Cleveland Speech and Hearing, $4,500, and Neighborhood Alliance, $493,954.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Could I just say, this morning I went to the Neighborhood Alliance breakfast, and Commissioner Kokowski and I had gone over for a separate tour one afternoon, and the work they do is just incredible. They reach from young to old, and I, I'm really just pleased to see that we're able to give them that boost, because their funds are very effectively used. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Okay. Under number 16, job and family services. Authorize lease agreement with MT Business Technologies of Avon Lake for copy machines, effective retroactive June 18 of 2019 through June 18 of 2024, at a cost of $9,034.80 per year. Authorize the director to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Number 17, authorize subgrant agreement with Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Department of Medicaid. The purpose of this subgrant agreement is to establish the terms, conditions, and requirements governing the administration and use of the financial assistance received by or used by the Lorain.
Department of Job and Family.
County Department of Job and Family, I'm not used to seeing CD.
Yeah.
And Child Support Enforcement Agency, effective July 1 of 2019 through June 30, 2021.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Under number 18, under sanitary engineer, approve and enter into an agreement with K.E. McCartney and Associates for civil engineering services for the Boone Road Sanitary Sewer and Lift Station in Columbia Township, in the amount not to exceed $824,000.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Number 19, under children's services, authorize various personnel to utilize the agency's master cards for year 2019, not to exceed $2,500, in accordance with the policy.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Number 20, under domestic relations, amend resolution number 19-285, adopted May 15, 2019, entering into an agreement with Juvenile Court and Penfield Township trustees for use of Township Hall with the kitchen in event of emergency evacuation of the residential facilities. Amendment is to reflect the trustees of Penfield Township and expires December 20 of '24.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Number 22, under Health District, approve change order number three, Two Seats Builders Incorporated, in the amount of $15,710.73 for water line.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Number 23, under Mental Health, authorize employment of legal counsel in an amount not to exceed $25,000, providing legal counsel to the Lorain County Board of Mental Health.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to comment on this.
Commissioner, could I just interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
I was advised this morning that the counsel that the Mental Health Board is looking to retain is Gary Ebert, Seeley Savage, Ebert and Gorsch, so I just thought you would like to know that. They're out of Westlake, I believe.
And that's the Board of Mental Health that's retaining them.
My thoughts are that when, you know, the voters of Lorain County support the Lorain County Board of Mental Health levy, and, and also these are taxpayer dollars, they expect those dollars to be invested in treating individuals to help them turn their lives around. I certainly don't think that they would support these dollars being invested in a legal counsel when this board is only going to remain for two more working days.
Two more business days, yeah.
Two more business days.
And also, we have not heard back from the county prosecutor's office as to whether or not he was going to sign off on this as a legitimate expense. I would not be in favor of supporting that at all.
I think it's difficult to justify $25,000 allocated to a board, as you said, that's going to literally just not even be in existence within two business days.
The $25,000 is the commissioner's cap, it's, they're not asking for 25, I just want to be clear that.
Oh, we impose the 25?
The 25,000, so that it doesn't come back to, say you misrepresented the request.
No.
The, the, some time ago, years back, we started with that. That, that's a moving target, but that's a start, counselor, you may want to explain that. Of course, you know, they'll use words against you, Commissioner.
Sure.
We usually initially limit the cap, and then, then the requests can be made to move that cap. So they're not asking for that, they're not asking for an amount, they're just asking for counsel. But in our standard resolution on these requests and prior, we started with that as a cap. Would I represent that correctly?
Right, there are various statutes, but there are limitations as to what they expend, but yeah, that, that request didn't come from them, that's just what we've always used as our starting point.
I would suggest that once we know how the prosecutor stands on it, we might be better equipped to make a decision as to what direction we would want to go.
Well, I would still, I still contend that the taxpayers expect dollars to be invested in helping people receive treatment, so they can turn their lives around. I don't think the taxpayers would welcome spending dollars for legal counsel for a board that will remain for two more working days. Any other comments? No? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Lundey?
No.
Ms. Kokowski?
No.
Ms. Sveda?
No.
Okay. Is there any public comment for today?
This public comment section, each individual will be given three minutes. She beat you to the podium, David.
She did.
She's a faster runner than you are.
Good morning, Elaine.
Good morning, Elaine Jargus, Executive Director of the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorain County. I have good news and bad news. What would you like first?
Bad, always.
The bad news is, you know, with the epidemic and everything, we're going through our youth survey, students surveyed, and we still need to emphasize prevention for our young people. And we're doing that in partnership with Mental Health, Health, school districts, and communities, because we are finding, as kids are reporting rates of suicide, depression, substance use primarily vaping and marijuana, risk perception is pretty significantly impacting their days, as well as their physical health. So as partners, our board, the Board of Mental Health, and the Health Department continue to work with the schools to do that. And, you know, the eyes are, have to be on prevention as significantly as they are with treatment and recovery. In this last version of the state budget, there was actually money eliminated again for prevention, so we've got to keep our advocacy going for our young people. So that's the bad news, but no, we're working on that. Good news, we were able to draw down over a million dollars of the state opiate money that Ohio got, and out of that, we have opened up capacity with Silver Maple Recovery for Detox, now known as Withdrawal Management and Short Term Residential, and they're full with our referrals. We also have been able to open up with Road to Hope House, a women and children's facility, as well as a facility for women on buprenorphine and Suboxone, because that's been limiting their stay.
Just a quick question on the Silver Maple, are?
It's public, public comment.
Oh, that's right, oh, sorry. Sorry, nevermind.
That's okay, we can talk offline. But anyways, capacity is opened up with that money, and we're really now working with our medical systems, because again, if we understand addiction is a chronic disease, we know that the medical systems have a partnership role with the primary and behavioral healthcare. So that money is, is getting there, it's a little slow when we navigate three major health systems, but Mercy is on board, and we're nibbling away at the other facilities. And then finally, I just want to invite you, if you have time this evening, the Antlers Ballroom, our board is celebrating, it's a 30th celebration, 30 years of Addus. It's just a reception, walk in from 5 to 7, you're more than welcome to pop down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I brought all six of you up there. Please pass one of those, no, no, don't pass the books yet. Because there are only five of those. But for all six of you, our copies of the Oberlin Summer Theater Festival program, I saw Sandy down in Oberlin the other night, I hope we see all of you down there in our increasingly good restaurants, and that's.
That's for Jim, yes.
Exactly, and I expect to see Facebook post things from the Corner Joint and other places down there.
Great.
Rapidly. The other thing I've passed to you is the June agenda of the Oberlin City Council, and I passed it to you for a number of reasons, all having to do with communications. First, I would welcome your returning public comment to the end of this meeting instead of where it is now, because, except for today, when I'd like to get out of here too. As when I was here three weeks ago, public comment came before the commissioner's report, before the administrator's report, and some public comment would have been obviated if you, we just talked after you'd had all your business done, instead of after part of it was done. We have public comment at the end of the Oberlin City Council meeting, and we even have it after what you see there as referrals, advocacy, correspondence, and reports. That was an innovation to Oberlin City Council that I got from this board about 15 years ago, and I was trying to get them to enumerate the things that the city council had received as a board, so that the public would know, the way you guys do, and tell us everything that's, that's coming in correspondence by way of reports, EPA notices, all that, none of that comes to the Oberlin public. However, that June 3 meeting of Oberlin City Council was available on the web the following day with, by the middle of, by noon the following day, you can go to the Oberlin City Council website and go through the agenda, and there's a little green box next to it, and you can watch the discussion of that item, or you can watch the whole meeting. This meeting is going to be broadcast on Saturday morning, and the second broadcast will be at 11 o'clock after the first meeting of that board on July 1st at 6 o'clock. The public, trying to understand what's going on here and see what you actually said, has no opportunity to do that until way after things are done. As I was coming into here today, The Sound of Ideas was on discussing the Gibson's Oberlin College lawsuit. That will be rebroadcast tonight at 9 o'clock, and if you want it, it sounded really good, I had to come in here, so I wouldn't be late before it was over, but you can already hear what went on. And in that one, you can actually spoken to the, you know, specific thing you wanted. Your board correspondence, item 12, already covers your first meeting of the new board, so I didn't want to say you don't have to repeat that, because you actually have already presented that. So it is already part of the record. So I would really urge that you get the website, I mean, Oberlin will tell you how to do it. It's, it's actually really good, and we weren't anywhere near as good as you guys were about this 10 years ago, but we're a whole lot better now. And the rebroadcast are only those two, and as I say, in this case, a whole lot of it is going to be not timely. We have a Board of Mental Health meeting tomorrow afternoon. I've asked that copies of the three items concerning that board be before us at our desk tomorrow afternoon, but people could see what you said and hear the discussion, if this, we're already getting into a public format. So that's all the communication stuff, except, I'm, I'm ready to say Teresa, because I've been ready for this, and it's Janice. Please pass five of those down, keep one for yourself. Jerry, you don't get this, because you don't need it. This is, this is the annual report of Ottawa County. Ottawa County is not superior to Lorain County in almost any particular. She's passed one too many, Jim, it's got to go, somebody needs one down there, maybe it's Janice. I don't, I don't think their annual report is terribly good, but since we don't have one, it's better than ours. I would really ask, hey, I've been spending more time in Ottawa County for a number of reasons, not the least of which was trying to get Janine Donaldson to be our board, State Board of Education representative. I've gotten to know a lot of their services and a lot of things that they do, and some of them, because their population is only a sixth of ours, you know, they can do a lot of things better in terms of direct service. But the communication they give, this has been available every year, there are stacks of it, right when you go in to get, you know, file your taxes and things like that, in their administration, in their courthouse. And I would just encourage the commissioners to think about something once a year, where you explain to people what these departments are and what they do, and give some kind of report annually on what they do. I hope that wasn't more than three minutes, but.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
If you have any questions, on your time, my time is done. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Anyone else willing to make public comment?
Okay, Mr. Quirkin?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see him.
Janice wants to get to lunch.
Morning, Mr. Phillips.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gerald W. Phillips, 461 Winwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio. I've been a resident of Lorain County for 36 years, 22 in Avon and 14 in Avon Lake. I want to present to the commissioners some, some things for your consideration. some things for your consideration. The first item deals with the use of plastic bags in the county, you know, in connection with some environmental concerns. Lake Erie borders Lorain County. It's a valuable asset. You know, there's concerns to keep it cleaned up. Cuyahoga County has recently addressed this issue. I would hope that the Commissioners consider this. The second item is the use of tax certificates, to sell them, so you can get additional revenues and pay off the delinquent taxes. Cuyahoga County uses that mechanism. It would be an increased cash flow for all the governmental agencies that depend upon the taxes. Third is the use of the Lorain County Port Authority to assist in the economic expansion and economic development in the county. Cuyahoga County uses that as a vehicle to attract businesses, and I think Lorain County should look at that as a mechanism to help develop this county. The Lorain County Community Development Department, I think there should be an increased emphasis on economic development and expansion, and that goes hand in hand with the third item, the Lorain County Port Authority. The City of Lorain has a port authority, which, to my recollection, is not used very much. If there's any interest in any of these items by the Commissioners, either one or all, or the administration, I'm more than willing to sit down, talk to any Commissioner, or Commissioners, or the administration. A couple of comments on some of the items that came up. I applaud the Commissioners for approving Item Number 11, as far as the merger in the Addus Board, the consolidation. Mental health issues do have a stigma, and it is a medical condition. A comment about the forgiveness of the property taxes. I agree with Administrator James Cordez that it's a standard provision in any contract, that you can have a condition. It's called a condition preceding or a condition subsequent, and in my practice, it's almost always done. And Ms. Sueda, you know, from a real estate point of view, you have contingencies...
All the time.
All the time. So, I agree with Mr. Cordez. The seventh item, David Ashenhouse, first brought up about the public comment. I think the Board should consider that of where it's best fit. It's there now to kind of let the public who want to speak, they can leave early, but he makes some valid points about waiting for your reports, so that if something comes up, they can report, you know, they can comment on it. I'm not sure it's that essential for the correspondence, because that's just routine items that you can read from the agenda. But I think the Board, the Commissioners should look at that and decide where it's best fit. Finally, I made a request for Number 8 for the copy of that K.E. McCartney agreement. Unfortunately, I made a request on Teresa Upton, and I guess she's on vacation or she's not present. So, if I could get a copy of that before I leave...
It's Number 18, Jerry.
Yeah, Number 18.
Yeah. Should be in the package.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll get it for you.
Yeah. It's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Good to see you. Any others wishing to make public comment this morning? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment.
Mr. Cordez?
Quite a lengthy day.
Already.
Already. I expected to be a long week, too. We've been so mired in a lot of complications this past two weeks. I wanted to point out, it was reported in the paper yesterday, and I have information on it, but I didn't bring it with me this morning, of the significant grant that was received by the Community College, specifically the Workforce Institute, of which I'm a Board Member, to work as the coordinating entity in Northeast Ohio regarding some workforce initiatives. I want to bring forward some information on that in the next week or two and have them make a presentation. It's good for our community.
Yeah.
But not only for our community, but the surrounding area, and it brings a lot of prestige to the workings here in Lorain County. They've been working on that grant for a very long period of time. While it was reported in the paper, it doesn't do justice to the amount of work that was put into receiving that. And it'll be quite a bit of job creation through the Workforce Institute. We've been keeping that, that Workforce Institute afloat with not a lot of resources, just plugging in some administrative money from grants and things like that, and the ABLE program, and some workforce development dollars, and to the workforce, the WIB Board, the Workforce Investment Board, and so forth. So, it's really going to be a huge injection into trying to get some additional resources out of that to not only improve Lorain County, but Northeast Ohio. So, more to come on that, hopefully, next week or the week after, when we... Well, not next week, because we're not meeting. So, the week after, maybe get a presentation and show you all the good works that are going to come in the next three years from that program. I know it's been a long morning, so I have more, but it'll have to wait till our next Board meeting. Thank you. What's that?
Jerry?
I do have a couple pending legal matters that I need to discuss in executive session. And with all due respect, I have to disagree with the Board or Commissioners' comments regarding Mr. Neff. I personally was told they were looking at him, and I strongly support it and urged the Mental Health Board to retain Mr. Neff. You know, in regard to both Mr. Neff and Elaine Jargus, when this Board merges, those two people have a great deal of knowledge regarding their organizations, and they have a great deal of historical knowledge that we can't get from anybody else. So, regardless of what capacity, I want to let you know, I'm going to urge this new Board to retain those people's services.
And just to clarify your statement, we speak individually.
Yeah, that was my comment only.
Yeah.
I just...
Yeah, that was my own...
I'm sorry they laughed.
Yeah, we speak individually.
Mm-hmm.
This would be...
Yeah.
Board reports.
This is... Okay. Well, just two quick things. First, I want to congratulate Tony Dimakia for his appointment to the City Council at Large to fill Joe Kazura's seat while he serves as the Mayor until the end of the year. And a big congratulations to Jack Bradley, who will be the Democrat candidate for the City of Lorain as Mayor in November. And then this year, I... This past Monday, I said goodbye to my Board members at Goodwill. Been on the Board there for about a decade, and there's some good synergies with Goodwill and the Commissioners. You know, they keep a lot of items out of our landfill, because people donate and reuse, reduce, and recycle.
Yes.
And also, job creation. They really help people with the money that they make in their stores, to help people with barriers to employment, to find jobs. So, really a great organization, and I was sad to say goodbye, but because I have so many other things that I have to do these days, especially with the County Commissioners Association and other things, I did say goodbye after about a little over a decade. So, I wish them well in the future. End of my report.
Yeah. We all know that you should almost qualify for a resident of Columbus. You're spending so much time down there these days, so it's easy to understand, but thank you for your service to that Board. Just want to salute the Lorain County Community Action Agency, opening up the Ron Nabokowski Youth Center. Ron is somebody who, I can tell you, was a mentor to me. He took me under his wing when I first ran for the Legislature. He was always giving me advice. He was always sending me books to read, and he was a true social justice person. He just wanted to make sure that everybody was treated with dignity and respect, and also stressed that, you know, we need to reach out and help lift people up at times in their lives. And can't say enough good things about Ron. I mean, it's a real tribute to him, to the opening of the Youth Center. And congratulations, Lorain County Community Action Agency. That's going to touch a lot of lives and impact a lot of lives. In fact, there was a story on the news about that last night. I can't remember which station I was watching. I flipped through the channels, as my wife will tell you far too much. But anyhow, we've had discussions about the continuation of some stormwater projects, Brownhelm Township in Carlisle. Those have been continued, important projects for those communities. Also, want to recognize Janet Byrd, who is retiring from the Lorain County Historical Society. For anyone who knows Janet and her husband, Bill, I can't think of two people who've been probably more passionate and dedicated to preserving the history of this county than those two individuals. There are many. But as far as the Historical Society, I mean, they just basically kept everything running for a long time. Great people to work with, just two of the nicest people you ever meet. I'm planning on going over and presenting a commendation to Janet here later this afternoon. They're having kind of an open house, kind of a say goodbye. I'm sure they'll still be involved, because even when I went to a recent event, after Bill had stepped down, he was out there selling the raffle tickets during one of the events for the Historical Society. So, I'm sure they'll still be plugged in, but just two really, really nice people, and they've provided a lot of community service to the Lorain County Historical Society. And speaking of history, I'm going to come out of retirement and play in a historic baseball game on Saturday. My Little League experience, maybe it's about the best I can do. But we'll be playing under baseball rules from the 1800s. I've been told that there are no gloves involved.
Ooh.
We use something that's closer to a stick than an actual bat, some crazy rules, like if the ball, if you pick up the ball on one bounce, it's an automatic out. And if the ball...
Stuck on the Motrin.
Yeah. If the ball first hits fair before it goes out, regardless of where it goes out, it's a fair ball.
Would you hit them with a stick?
Yeah. Well, try not to hit anybody. So, anyhow, I hope not to return here next week, or our next meeting is a wounded warrior. I'll try to keep it in check, realizing the reality of how old I am and how I'm not the most athletic person in the world, but we'll get through it. Congratulations to the Addus Board with their 30th anniversary, serving our county and our community for so long. And as our colleagues have pointed out, folks who've served on these Boards over the years, just really passionate about what they do, and we can't say thank you enough. Congratulations, as was pointed out, to Tony Dimakia. As though school board wasn't tough enough, he's now going to be seated on a City Council seat, and we wish him all the best. It was really great to see the appointment for the candidate for the Democratic Party for the fall, being Jack Bradley, a well-respected, very well-liked man, very, very smart man. And he'll do... He's got his election in November. We'll see what the voters decide, but I can tell you can ask for a stronger candidate. And it was great to see the new interim Mayor of Lorain, Joe Kazura. Served with Joe in Columbus, have tremendous respect for Joe. He got a lot of things done in Columbus that he never got credit for, because he planted all the seeds in the minds of the Republicans, and they went with it. And Joe didn't care who got credit for it, but things got done because Joe was working things behind the scenes. So, it's good to see this leadership emerging in Lorain and weaves the Board, and certainly look forward to working with them.
Well, let's see. First of all, keep Lorain County. Beautiful meeting was last Thursday. We had a recap of our Pride Day statistics. We had over 2,000 volunteers participate in our Pride Day, and a lot of them go uncounted. We haven't received the numbers yet on the poundage of waste that was collected, or photos of the, some of the projects, but we will be posting all of that. And all in all, given that it started a rainy, kind of cold morning, that was great to have that kind of a turnout. I had... Our meeting was held over at LCCC, and it was held in the Innovation Center. And for anybody who has not been over there to tour the Innovation Center, it's an incredible facility. When we talk about the workforce development and the grants, and some of the future of Lorain County's future entrepreneurs, they are very immersed in entrepreneurship there. They are developing creativity in young minds. It's like, I felt, when I walked inside there, it felt like they had a day of play, and yet they are using all of their STEM resources and talents to utilize into their creativity. It's just incredible. If you can get over there, they're doing tours, just in a fantastic facility, and I'm anxious to see what they're going to develop in the near future from there as well. That evening, Thursday evening, was our Township Trustee meeting. Tom Kelly came out, talked about emergency management, gave us a slide presentation of the emergency vehicle, interesting vehicle. And on Saturday, I did attend the ribbon cutting for the LCCAA Bike Shop and Ron Nabokowski Youth Center. His son and some of his other family members were there. And the irony was that Ron would... He never liked... Joe Kazura was the presenter, and as the Mayor said, Ron never really agreed with putting names on buildings. So, the irony was that his name's on this front door, but that they felt he'd be more than pleased to see the work that's going to be done there. And what they do, they're teaching youth to repair bicycles. You can donate bicycles, and then they're going to be trained on how to repair them, and they'll sell them, and it hopefully will create a little synergy and business there for them. But the building turned out beautifully. It's over on Town Street. And I have a special connection to Tuesday nights. That's last night, last night's appointments. Yes, congratulations to Tony Dimakia, who's stepping in early for the Council seat. But Jack Bradley's my cousin. And I figured out last night, other than for one other cousin in town, I've known him longer than anyone else in the county. And I can tell you that he didn't like the law that evolved prior to that appointment, did not, was not in favor of how that all shook out. But I think that he will be the right person to step into that position. He has no political baggage. He's always fought on behalf of the rights of others. He's generous with his time and money. He's a very smart, but also a very listening individual. And I think Lorain's going to be very well-served. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. There is not a Commissioners' Board meeting next week?
It's a no-meeting on July 3. Just so members of the media know, and for those who regularly attend, if you show up, you have the room all to yourselves, but we won't be here.
Okay. Board Correspondents?
I would make the motion that the reading be waived.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So, nobody wants me to read all the correspondence?
Nope.
Enough of my reading for today.
Well, you might as well... You can, but we'll leave.
You're leaving. You'll get started with lunch.
Okay. Mr. Lundey?
Hi.
Ms. Kokowski?
Hi.
Ms. Sueda?
Hi.
Okay.
Seeing no other business at this time, I would move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the County Administrator and by the Assistant County Prosecutor.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Hi.
Ms. Kokowski?
Hi.
Ms. Sueda?
Hi.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.